On for those listening, we are on budget. That's agenda item number three. And this will be the mid-year budget review. Staff did present to our board and the public last Thursday evening about this. And today we'll have a more comprehensive conversation. And Ms. Michael and oh, we've got the same cast of characters up there all day. You guys have been great. Thank you so much.
So, thank you so much. I presented the mid-year budget review on Thursday evening. In terms of the operating fund, I went over the required adjustments related to the audit. Right? Also noted that we're reflecting the reduction in state aid for the compensation funding that the state will not be providing us in FY seventeen. And then in terms of the expenditures, the primary focus in terms of expenditures after the required adjustments for audit were additional savings from compensation-based savings and health insurance. And then from that recommending that we do two things. Fund the teacher recruitment incentives that were just discussed in the compensation work session. That was five hundred and eleven thousand. And then set aside the remaining funding for FY seventeen beginning balance. So that funding available is four point eight million. And if we add that to our funding for FY eighteen, that does bring our available funding for FY eighteen up to twenty-seven million, which leaves us with a gap of six point one million as we compare that to the beginning balance funding that we have in FY seventeen. So I thought I would just provide that overview versus going through the presentation again. And then I'm happy to answer any questions that we may have on FY seventeen.
Ms. Heinz?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I understand one thing. Page four of this presentation is where we talk about, oh, gosh. Yeah, it's the early, yeah, the incentive that we were just talking about in the last work session, right? So this is what we would do to fund the incentives for recruiting. Is that right?
Correct. So we had recommended in this agenda to set aside this five hundred and eleven thousand dollars, right, that would be utilized after Chase's team completes all of those next steps, so reaching out to the teacher associations and other organizations. But in terms of calculating what this cost is, we really looked at providing, as they mentioned, tiered stipends, so different amounts depending on how early someone would sign up to work for FCPS. So really looking at if we started our stipends perhaps with an amount like two thousand dollars and then, you know, went down to fifteen hundred and then down to a thousand and then maybe down to five hundred, utilizing our projected number of stipends that we wanted to issue with those dollar amounts, right? That's how we got to this estimate of five hundred and eleven thousand.
Okay, thank you. And so, I mean, that's, those are nice round numbers for, you know, a lot of times when we talk about stipends for teachers, it's like three hundred dollars or something for the whole year. But, so these are significant. And where did we get these from? Is there a market analysis here?
I think that we've kind of talked about that a little bit at the end. There's a couple of them. It varies widely, you know, five hundred up to seven, eight, even ten thousand dollars depending on jurisdictions. But the closest comparators we have, one in the region that offers twenty-five hundred and then a similar, a district offering a similar amount near Richmond.
Thank you.
Ms. Palchak?
Thank you, sorry. Quick question. I don't know if we've discussed this, but I have heard from a few people concerning our early start from last year. I know there were some things said out there. But is there any possibility of, you know, bringing forward a little bit the pay, the ten-months pay because there will be a big gap for teachers who are paying for childcare?
So, so that has been a common question that we've received. First, our teachers will still be working the same number of contract days, right? Their contract will start earlier, but overall they'll still work the same number of days overall. So when they start a week earlier, right, it will be then, the way our current schedule is working, they would still wait till the end of September to get their paycheck. So that is a longer period of time from when they start. Now, because we pay our teachers currently on a ten-month basis, anyone who's already working here would be assuming that they weren't going to receive a paycheck at the beginning of, you know, July or August and September. Depending on how I say this, at the be, at the end of July and the end of August. So if they've already been here, presumably they're planning on that expenditure. And we're researching ways that we could help new teachers who come into the district because we know that for somebody who starts here as their first job, that really is a long time to work prior to getting their first paycheck.
And I appreciate that. And just to understand, you don't see a possibility of even for teachers who are here to just bring it up half a month? I know it gets a little tricky, a full month versus half month.
So I think when we look at our current teachers, one of the things that we've really talked about is if we advance them some of their pay, let's say we were to give them a portion of their September thirtieth check early, then when they got to September thirtieth, they still wouldn't have a full paycheck to help them with the next month, right? So we really want to work with them to help them see that, you know, they're still getting paid over the same, you know, ten months. So as they've been planning each year to cover not having a paycheck over the summer, they'll just continue to need to do that. But we weren't planning on it because no matter what, unless we paid them more, at some point they would have a lower paycheck, which makes it very difficult if you're used to getting your same check, you know, over the entire ten months that we're paying you.
Mr. Moon?
Just to make sure that my understanding is correct, we are just setting aside, setting aside the money and you're going to report back to us after you have a conversation with the employee organizations about this. And you will bring this back to us for final blessing sometime in spring? Or, or you're just by, by, by passing this one, are you going to assume that we're just going to bless what, whatever you will do?
We can bring you the details. It would probably be in, in January and earlier than early February.
Because you need to start, right, hiring, hiring, hiring teachers. So I, I just, I'm just doing my rough calculation of five hundred and ten thousand dollars because I sort of remember you mentioning our goal for the early hire next year is about three hundred. If I just use that number, average is about seventeen hundred dollars per teacher for early hire. Is that basically about the ballpark figure?
Yes, we were really looking at tiering them. So people we hired earlier would get a higher amount, but yes, on average.
About seventeen hundred. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Corbett Sanders followed by Ms. McLaughlin.
Great. Along those same lines, last summer I thought we hired well over a thousand teachers. Correct?
Two thousand.
Two thousand, okay. So it would be helpful to understand, I mean, with this five hundred thousand, how much of that two thousand, do you really only think that three hundred teachers would be hired prior to the June first?
Well, we would hope that we would hire even more than that because we, that's, we want to change the culture of when we hire teachers in Fairfax County. And so this is one way we think we can start to move that up. We looked at other options, but to your point, you know, we, if we said, okay, we're going to give a thousand dollars to every teacher that takes a job in a critical field, which we hired like nine hundred and seventy-five teachers in an identified critical field last year, that's a million dollars if my math is correct, right?
Right, well, that's what I'm.
And so this is a first step, we know, but as we look at, we appreciate being able to be built in the budget, but we do think it'll have a significant impact on us being able to hire people earlier into the system.
I would just encourage, and maybe I should have said this during the last conversation, but making that deadline May first. And the only reason I say that is as a parent of a recent college graduate, one of the things these kids have to do is fill out, or these young people have to do is they fill out a form saying, you know, whether or not they have a job. And they get brownie points for having a job. The schools get brownie points for these young people having jobs. And so it's really that timeframe in which they're looking at trying to check that box.
We, we're not trying to presume too much when we presented today because we really do want to work with our teacher associations and get, and get their feedback. But one of the reasons we use the word tier and throw out some different dates is because we would have tiered dates along the way. So by March first, if you sign a contract with us, you might get X amount of dollars. By April first, the amount would be different. Then by May first, it would be different. So it's not like any, our, our recommendation, we work with the associations and with, and bring it back to the board will not be anybody that signs on with FCPS before May fifteenth gets a, gets a lump sum. That, that's not what we're, we're going to propose.
So is your intention that once you pilot this program this year, that you'll come back to the board with a report that says, this is what we found and this is how we would tweak the program? Because I think, I mean, this is a nice investment made by the board if we support it. However, I think we'd want to know what the cost benefit has been of doing this.
My, yes, my thinking is we'll fold it into Goal Three. It's an extension about the work we're doing under Goal Three. So we just fold it into our premier workforce report every fall.
Great. I would just want it as a next steps for this session, please.
Ms. McLaughlin?
So I did want to check in terms of the healthcare cost savings. Had we communicated to employees that the cost savings, we're going to go back to reducing premium costs? And if not, why was that perhaps the understanding from employee perspective?
Sure. So what we're doing on the agenda here is we're recognizing cost savings for this current fiscal year as compared to what we projected the cost would be. So when the rates were finally set for all of our health insurance over the summer, those rates were lower than the rates that we had projected in terms of our approved budget. So the employees know the rates from open enrollment and we're just now recognizing those savings in terms of their impact to our current year's budget for the employer portion of that costing.
Okay, if I understood you correctly, you're saying that you made your, your projections and then it turns out that there was more savings than you anticipated.
So every single year when we develop our budget, so we're now working on our proposed budget for FY eighteen. So right now we're projecting what we think our health insurance costs will be for fiscal year eighteen. When we set health insurance rates, they're done on a calendar year, right? So we know what the beginning portion now for the first six months of FY eighteen will be because they're covered in the calendar rates that we set for FY, for calendar year seventeen. So in this case, the rates that when we developed the FY seventeen budget that we had projected for the second half of that fiscal year were a projection. But when health rates were actually set, right, for open enrollment this fall, the employer cost is lower than we had projected based on those final rates that were set.
But technically speaking, couldn't you take the savings, which ended up being better than you expected even just for the employer, and put that into our overall budget and cost for healthcare so that you could actually bring down the premiums the following year?
So the savings, when we set the rates, we determine what the rate needs to be in terms of our health insurance costs since we're self-insured. Then each year that rate is split between the employer and the employee. And that's based on a distribution percentage that we've remained consistent for a very long time. So it depends on your level of coverage. So if you're a single employee, FCPS pays twenty-five percent of that cost versus if you're a mini-family or family, FCPS, sorry, I'm flipping the other way. I'm saying them backwards. If you're an employee, you pay fifteen percent of the single cost. And if you're an employee and you're getting mini-family or family, you pay twenty-five percent of that cost. So any savings that occur do benefit the employee and they also benefit FCPS.
Let me, let me, let me try to hear Megan, at least in terms of asking questions. There's two point five million dollars of savings that being realized and you want us to recognize as a part of mid-year budget review. I think what Mrs. McLaughlin is asking is whether part of this saving should go back to employees. That's what she's saying, by reducing their premium for the next year. Is that from January? Well, that's, I think that's what she's asking.
That is, thank you.
And at least the fifteen percent of this, if a split is eighty-five and fifteen, whether fifteen percent should not be used to reduce the employee premium. Whether I agree with her or not, I mean, that's, I think that's what the question is.
So I think what I would say is when we set the rates, we recognize the savings, right, and the employees recognize the savings in the portion that they paid, as did FCPS. I, I think you're right. We could, instead of recognizing the savings, we could overpay the cost of health into our health insurance fund and that funding would be there to help us set the rates for next year, right? It's something that we could do, but knowing the challenges that we're facing in the operating fund, you know, knowing the state not paying their share of the compensation increases, the salary increases, looking at the challenges that we're facing for FY eighteen, this really seemed like the best use of that funding, knowing that the employees truly do benefit when we set those rates. Because any savings that we obtain do get applied to both the employee and the employer based on the percentage of the costs that we're each paying.
Well, okay, let me, let me just add this one then on. So when you set your rates based on your estimates and turns out, oh, we didn't need to, when we set the rate this most recent year, did they go up for our employees? So they lost additional money out of their paychecks this year over the year prior?
It would have depended on what health plan they were in. I do believe the rates for Kaiser actually decreased for our employees. So they saw that savings.
Okay, but that's for those who picked Kaiser, which makes up roughly what percent of the people who were covered?
So what we do is we look at our experience in each plan, right, and apply that to the plan. So if our costs for Kaiser, for example, are going down, that savings benefits the participants in that plan.
So where did the two point five come from? Where'd the savings come from if it wasn't Kaiser? I, I mean, I honestly.
To your point, I think, Megan, the board can direct us to put that money into the health fund to reduce the employees' health costs. It'll also the employers. But I think to Kristin's point, our recommendation is that we use to balance this year's budget and a set aside funding to help us balance the twenty-eighteen budget. But to your point, if the board wants to set aside that, those savings and put it into the health fund, that can be done to help mitigate any cost increases for next year.
The, the, thank you, Susan. The question where I was trying to get at is if we raised their employee contribution to the healthcare coverage over the year prior, so they lost their take, you know, their net take-home pay, and then we've realized savings from it, then yes, to be perfectly honest, as this board member, I would be more comfortable restoring money into the healthcare fund because we have got to harness the tremendous financial demand that health insurance is putting on employees nationally, let alone here. So if it turns out that we didn't raise it over last year, then maybe I could consider the fact that we're trying to holistically look at the needs of the system. But this is money that we generated by what we're charging employees and then what we're charging ourselves. And I think Mr. Moon put it best. I wouldn't necessarily say they pay fifteen percent, but they'll get a hundred percent of the two point five million in realized savings. But even fifteen percent going back to employees into that fund would at least hopefully, you know, provide a cushion or s- I, I just would like something where we're not continually raising employee share and employer's share of healthcare because it all, it all, in the end, if, even if you put the two point five into the healthcare fund, it's still part of our annual operations. It's just we're targeting it there to say, this is, this is an area that we really want to make sure that we're not.
Let me try to say this another way. Let me think of it this way.
Okay, no, I want to hold on for a second. I heard Ms. Strauss say, if it's a separate fund, then how are we taking something from a separate fund and putting it into our annual operating fund?
We're not. So let's say that I have a kid who's going to start driving and I budget for the fact that my car insurance is going to go up by, say, a hundred dollars a month for the fact that he's driving, right? And him and I have an agreement that we're going to split the cost fifty-fifty, right? So he gets his driver's license and I had projected my cost would go up a hundred dollars. But he took an online course with my insurance company and did all of the things that he needed to do and he brought the rate down. So instead of it going up a hundred, it only went up eighty. So because we share that cost, he saved forty and I saved forty. So the employees' savings were rec- save ten each, thank you. So the employees' savings, right, were recognized in the rates that we set for them. So they did experience their savings already. This is just the employer's share of that savings.
Well, I, I think part of the problem is we're, we're actually trying to have a conversation where it's numbers in the air versus if we were sitting here looking at a chart and you explained where the savings came from. But either way, if you're telling me that from the two point five million, that was our employer's cost savings, they already got their fifteen percent cut in the rates they already had.
Correct, correct.
Then I still would think that FCPS might want to consider still putting the two point five million where you're, you're looking at the fact that annually we keep, we hear our employees say, my premiums went up. And I know our employer premiums go up, that even though we're self-insured, it's just healthcare costs are spiraling out of control. So putting it into the general slush fund, and that's what I honestly think when it's untargeted, so just to understand, two point eight billion dollar budget, you just throw two point five million in, where is it?
So we're recommending that this funding be set aside for FY eighteen to help us cover that huge gap that we have between what our needs are for FY eighteen and our beginning balance.
Right, I understand, but two point five million dollars? Honestly, what I remember, Mr. Plattenberg telling us, that it would cost to do middle school start times to make them healthy, that would be another two and a half million dollars a year. I mean, does this board not understand we could take two and a half million dollars and target towards something we really care about?
And, and we understand that and that's for a discussion at a later time. I thank you for bringing that up, but I, I think that's for a discussion at a later date.
And also, also, Madam, Madam Chair, I think everybody heard, you know, Mrs. McLaughlin's point, whether advocacy on this or whether we agree on, if she wants to put in an amendment.
Absolutely.
She can, she can put in an amendment and we can have a, you know, further, further discussion at the board table.
Correct. Ms. Huff, Ms., and then Ms. Schultz?
So I, I guess my question to, to staff as far as the recommendation is concerned, if you had to decide now on this five hundred thousand dollars, is this more beneficial to us as a system and to our teachers than doing one of the, doing part of one of those scale adjustments we were just talking about, right? Because we know one of the figures is one point eight million. I mean, this is a third of the way there. So we're kind of spending as we go, but we really haven't made any priority decisions yet, I don't believe, as a board. And so what, we don't want just a cost benefit analysis on, let's do this and next year see if it was beneficial, but we sort of want to do a cost benefit analysis on, is this the better step than, let's say, changing a teacher's scale or more dollars into that teacher, changing that teacher curve? So.
Madam. But again, these are, I guess, decisions that are up to the totality of the board. Right now, this is staff's recommendation and we will be voting on this, you know, on the fifteenth. So if you have things like that, I think, again, we're talking about making amendments to, to this and.
So I guess then maybe I'll ask it more pointedly. Is the recommendation, having spoken to, to the, to the staff on the ground and our employees, that this is more beneficial than doing another teacher's scale?
So, Mr. Kofax?
Yes, go, go ahead.
This is just setting aside, we're not actually agreeing to spend the money. That's going to come back to us in January according to staff with a more information for the final decision by the board. It's just setting aside the funding. And another distinction between this and, and adjusting the pay scale is adjusting the pay scale of that one point eight million dollar is a recurring expenses and this is a one-time funding. That's what we do out of a mid-year budget, that's a one-time funding versus this one.
So this five hundred thousand is a one-time fund for early hire and next year we'll decide if we want to do early hire again?
As Dr. Amy said earlier, he'll bring back the report during the premium workforce and then we could talk through the effectiveness of the signing bonus program. And then if this is something that we would like to fund on a regular basis, it would be, it needs to be built into the nineteen budget, eighteen budget. We'll have to add money for eighteen and then make it recurring for nineteen and moving forward. And earlier, Mr. Moon, just to, that one point eight million for the classroom instructional, it was really just the one-time implementation cost of those.
Yeah, that wasn't recurring funds either. So, so just to be clear, in January, we'll be making this decision specifically about that. Right now, it's a set aside. All right, then I have one more question. On the compensation-based savings of six point eight million that we're recognizing for FY seventeen, is that now being built into FY eighteen projections or is that being done separately?
Yes, we will be looking at, at this when we build the proposed budget for FY eighteen, taking into account our most recent experience.
When we received our projection from Dr. Garza back at the joint meeting, did it include this consideration?
We looked at the savings that this base savings had in terms of our beginning balance adjustment for FY eighteen, but looking at the recurring, no.
Okay.
But we're still working on that for the proposed.
All right, that's good news. Okay, thanks.
Ms. Schultz?
So on the recent comment, Mr. Moon, that you made and confirmed by staff, that if any of us have a perspective about the two and a half million, why is it, why is the assumption, why do we start with the fact that it rolls into closing the gap and that if we want to change it, we have to submit an amendment? Why is this, why is staff's recommendation the starting place? Wouldn't, why don't we vote for that, that that is in fact the starting place instead of forcing board members to come up with an amendment for it? I think we should decide where it goes first. And if that's the consensus of the board, that's where it starts. And that if there's any desire to move it by any of the board members, then in fact, that becomes the amendment process. But, you know, staff doesn't set where, I mean, they, they make a recommendation to us and then we decide whether or not to take the recommendation. So there should be a vote of the board about what happens with that two and a half million dollars instead of that being the default position and having to work backwards from there. Are you asking me a question, Ms. Corbett Sanders? Well, I'm not, I'm not driving the train, Mr. Kofax.
Well, I think, you know, we, we're, we're talking here about what typically has happened. And what typically has happened is, you know, this is a quarterly review of this process and we view what staff tells us and then we have opportunities. Now, you'll have multiple opportunities, you know, year end and some of these monies that we're, that we are, you know, setting aside, it's not in stone. We are setting them aside for review at, at another point in time. And we have gone in the past, Ms. Schultz, we have gone back and where we said we set aside and then we, we've changed, you know, what, what the specificity of where we were, we were putting some of those chunks of.
I'm trying to figure out if you're agreeing with me. I think you are.
Well, I, I, I mean, I'm not. I'm saying this is our process and, and, you know, this is more, this is kind of just the way we have been doing things. I'm not saying it's.
I know.
I'm not saying.
Just because we've always done it.
I know. And, but what I'm saying is, is this is the, the road we are traveling on. That's kind of a, a bigger question. I know both you and Ms. Huff, though, I think some of these things, you have not, you, because of personal reasons, and you have not had the opportunity to sit on the two-on-two budget conversations. And I think some of those kind of questions are, are easily answered and, and more definitively answered as far as, you know, where, where, where we have those opportunities. So I appreciate your advocacy.
I agree completely that we can have a, a two-by-two conversation on the budget. That, that is a non sequitur to this issue, which is staff has realized and presented us two and a half million dollars and their recommendation to us is just roll it in to balancing the budget. And, and I, I think this board has got to get into the habit of deciding that if staff makes a recommendation to us, we need to vote on the recommendation on whether or not we're rolling it forward and then people can make an amendment. You don't start, that's not the starting place until we decide it's the starting place. It's a recommendation to the board. So I, I would posit that we must decide that the two and a half million dollars is being rolled in or not. And then, then board members can make decisions from that point forward. But at this point, it's merely a recommendation.
Correct. Mr. Moon, you want to say something?
I believe that that was an agreement. I think I heard an agreement.
I think, Madam Chair, Mr. Shorich and you both make a good points about this, but if I'm Mr. Shorich. But if Mr. Shorich along with the majority of board members want to do it a different way in the future, we can certainly do it that way, but that's a different discussion we, you know, we, we might want to have. That, that can refer to a governance or another budget committee discussion. In, in the past, in the past, when we came up with the motion, main motion for the final budget adoption, we made a slight change in how to do it. Now, this is a mid-year, we have a third quarter, we have, we have a year-end budget review all coming up. If you want to do it a different way than, as has been always done in traditional, in old way, we can have that discussion, but I don't think we'll do that today. But that's a discussion we could have. And, and in, in the same, in the same token, along with that, then it could open our, I don't know, what should I say, Pandora's box? But, you know, there are all the recommendations that come to us as a budget mo, as, as a motion, as a main motion, whether they should all come their way through staff or that each time we should, both these have got to have a discussion in advance and crafting my, my main motion, that could be part of that, that discussion as well. But, but I don't have any problem in presenting this way at this time and submit budget amendments.
Ms. Schultz, do you have anything else at this point in time on this?
I just, I just want to confirm, I feel like it took a very long time to get to Ms. McLaughlin's answer. The 15% and the 25% that employees pay, is the 15% and the 25% that they pay less this year because of the 25, because of the 2.5 million dollar savings?
The rates that they're paying are lower than they would have been without the savings.
They're less than they would have been. So, so no, they're not paying less, they're still paying more. They're just not paying more, more. So I, so I'm back to Ms. McLaughlin's view that the two and a half million dollars still was in part raised off of the employee contributions of the past. No, because you're just saying that if we hadn't negotiated, they would be paying even more than they're paying now. We would be paying more than we've been paying now, and the two and a half million dollars is solidly on our side of the line.
That is correct.
And so now the, the position is just whether or not we buy down future increases that we anticipate.
Correct.
And the 15 and 25% was set on what? Was set, I mean, so thi- this is, this is, this is the point that I brought up at the Thursday meeting. And one that I consistently hear, that if you are a dual employee household, you, you pay a penalty by paying 25% instead of 15%.
No, so if you are a family where you have both of you, a husband and a wife working for FCPS, if you don't have any other dependents other than the two of you, you're, you each are eligible for single coverage? In which case you pay 15%. If you both work for the system and you elect either mini-family or family, you only pay 20% as compared to all of our other employees who pay 25%. So you do receive a discount.
But the two 15%ths, if they, if they each treat, are treated as a single, the co-pays and the everything else wind up being higher than if it were a mini-family?
I don't believe so.
Oh, well, it's got to be, because you're meeting individual deductibles for two single people as opposed to, a deductible is typically not double for a mini-family. It's not twice as much. However, if it's two singles, it is twice as much.
Dee is coming up to answer the specific deductible questions.
Schultz, you do understand the distinction correctly in that if somebody enrolls in an individual plan and a second individual plan, they don't have the same sharing of family deductibles, et cetera. So when we have that situation and we know that the individuals are in fact eligible for a spousal discount, we actually communicate to them and say, you have a choice. You can enroll this way or you can enroll that way. Here are the implications of doing that, and then they make a decision on how they want to enroll.
But it winds up costing them more if they are two employees than if it were one employee with a family?
Yes, that's true. However, they're informed about the implications of those decisions and we do have a number of spouses who don't agree on the type of insurance they might want. So we have two employee spouses who, one will want to go to Kaiser and another one will want to have their benefits administered through Blue Cross.
But why do we penalize? So, so i- if there's a family and one of the parents works for FCPS and one doesn't, why do we penalize a family where both of the parents work for FCPS? I don't, I, I don't understand how that benefits us and why we detriment a family where there's two educators or administrator and an educator or educator and an IA or whatever. Why, why do we wind up penalizing when there are two FCPS employees in the family?
So if you have an individual policy, you have one individual deductible that you're going to meet if you choose a plan that has deductibles, right? Kaiser doesn't have deductibles. If you have a family policy where you want to cover everybody, that family deductible does interact. And if two members meet their deductible, that means that the $500 family deductible has been met, right? If they want to have separate policies, if you will, they each in, in incur a 15%. I don't know that that's penalizing them, that's allowing them to make a decision that is distinctive upon their needs.
I don't think we're getting to my answer, but I'll, I'll take it offline. But as I understand it, from, from quite a number of input on, inputs on this issue, that if you, if you are in a family where there are two FCPS employees, that you wind up paying more for insurance than you would if you were two, two employee, or two singles. So if they do the two singles, you're still winding up paying more as, as a dual FCPS employee family. And, and that's common, I, I think it's common in the educator world to, to have two FCPS employees. So I would like to continue to explore that with you and see what the impacts are. And if there are possibilities to mitigate that, this two and a half million may be the way. And, and I, I do think, and I don't know when, Mr. Nekofax, if you and Ms. Evans are going to have to have this conversation offline. But the, just because we've always done it this way is not good governance. It isn't a reason to continue to do it. And if staff brings us a recommendation on anything else, we vote as a board, that that's going to be the position of the board. And I think it's got to be, it's essential to be, particularly on, on budgetary matters. It's a fiduciary responsibility of us to take a position on a staff recommendation. And I would expect that we can resolve this offline. Thank you.
Ms. Strauss.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, since this is a mid-year budget review, we do vote on it. And given our, our, given the fact that the mill stacks failed and that we now have a large gap, I think it's very responsible for staff to recommend to the school board, press decide, that we push it forward and then make our final decisions on what to do with this as we form the FY 2018 budget. If we observe, the only recommendation for an increased expenditure is on the early hire teacher incentive, and that's it. Everything else is pushed forward. We have various grants that have come through, but that's in a separate budget. I suppose if the school board wishes to develop our health plans differently, that's a different question. Because it is, if we want to negotiate with our vendors and managers and how we create the healthcare stabilization fund, that really is a different, I believe, it's an important discussion, but it's, it's a slightly different discussion. Because if we wanted to rearrange the plans and deductibles, I have no idea if 2.5 million dollars would even be enough to do anything. We are self insured and it's a very large. But no, I hear what you're saying, Mrs. Schultz. But at any rate, I think it's.
It's the middle school later start times is what it is. It's a lot of money.
Yes, but it is when we get to the actual budget decisions, whatever cost it is, we will have the opportunity to make those decisions. But it's my recommendation that we push this forward so that we can make our actual spending decisions based on the totality of what we see as our priorities, what we know our revenues are available. If we, usually at mid-year, we may spend money on teaching the staffing reserve. If all of a sudden we have a huge bump in enrollment, but otherwise, we tend not. We push it forward to wait to see what the lay of the land will be so that we can weigh how we're going to spend the money, knowing on how much money we have and what our priorities turn out to be after thoughtful consideration in the next months. We start spending it now, that money is not here, and we might find in May, we find our priorities are going to have to be different. They could be the same, but they could be different. So my recommendation would be to go ahead and roll this forward so that we understand truly what lies ahead in the next months. Thanks.
Ms. Corbett Sanders.
I think it's all been said. Thank you.
Anyone else before I do go back? Mr. Wilson.
I wonder whether you could just explain a little bit the savings that's associated with the audit. I'm not sure where it falls, but it talks about the audit of the budget. Could you just explain that?
Sure. So each year, we finish our fiscal year on June 30th. And due to the timing of when we have to complete our final budget review in order for it to get incorporated into the county's final budget review, we complete that at the very, very beginning of July. So each year, we have expenditures that are really expenditures that occurred prior to June 30th, where we just didn't have the transactions processed by June 30th. So when we're completing our audit, we're picking up all of the adjustments for those transactions that due to timing weren't reflected in the final budget review. So it's not that the auditors found that we missed something, it's us reporting expenditures that occurred last fiscal year, but we're reporting them after June 30th.
Okay, is that a typical figure then?
It happens every single year. And in terms of the amount, if we compare this with previous, yes. Last year's was a little bit higher in terms of the adjustments, but it's very much in line with what we typically experience.
Okay, thank you.
All right, if we go back from Ms. McLaughlin.
Wow, okay. First thing, in the five years I've been on the board, what I remember and, and would certainly welcome other colleagues who served in the last term and can remember this as well. And, and in fact, I remember Kathy Smith leading us in this conversation. It, it wasn't that how we would bring the main budget motion, had to go through governance, we're going to try to change it the way we used to do it. It was just, the board had part of its budget conversation of, how do you want your, your main motion to be presented? And this when everything from, you know, the fast forward Superintendent Lockhart's going to give us something in early January. And then we're going to have a couple of work session conversations about it. We can do it one or two ways. His recommended budget still stands as sacrosanct, and then we all have to scramble around with each other after multiple work sessions to still get seven votes. Or we can be sitting here in a work session like we are today saying, what's the consensus of the board on how you want to redirect the funding? So I kind of see today being somewhat similar in that we, even though Mr. Moon's correct, there's kind of a typical approach we've done with it. If we were sitting here today and suddenly said, we want to earmark this two and a half million dollars in savings. We don't want it to just go into the 2.8 million, billion dollar, not sure where we'll find it after all that because we don't do a zero-based budget. Or, you know, we could say, now it's just simpler that way. But it's concerning to me either way that it feels like the 12 of us have sat here, we all say our different points of view, and that's the end of it. And then it still comes down to what the superintendent and staff want to do. I, I, I really can't kind of figure out what, how this process works well. Other than I guess we can, as Mr. Moon said, think out loud, hear from each other, and then start crafting motions. But it really does still put the, the, the burden on getting a board that what I've observed in the last five years doesn't like to change whatever the superintendent does. So the threshold typically tends to be, if the superintendent hears the will of the board, then we may or may not see a change. But even still, the superintendent could say, I just like what I want to do better or what my leadership team wants to do better. And then we, we just still have a lot, in my mind, some real hurdles to try and do things. So in terms of today's conversation, when I think about the fact that we had a budget task force that worked so hard last year on a menu of alternatives for cost savings, it did not at any point in time delineate, what does Fairfax County want to do with how it spends money on outside contracts, outside consultants, out-of-town travel? Those didn't show up as a menu of options that the task force could have identified and brought to the table or that this board could have brought to the table. So in my experience, working on the budget, it's kind of like, whatever parts of the budget get brought to us, we debate around. But there's a whole lot in that 2.8 billion we never see, we never discuss. It's, as Ms. Quinn told me in my budget meeting, it's packaged in things like project momentum or it's packaged under principles, spending on professional development. But we're talking about millions and millions of dollars that this board never oversees, never makes priorities on. And so now we're having a conversation over, you know, this expenditure adjustment at mid-year review. And I, I feel a little bit like we would be benefiting more on a budget of this size. If why weren't we coming at today's discussion as, do we want to earmark this for something? Let's help Dr. Lockhart understand the priorities of the board. When we just throw it into the big pot, it just disappears.
And can I just clarify in that? At the very beginning, when I talked about the funding that we have available from this quarterly review, that 4.8 million helping us address our beginning balance gap for FY18, this health savings is part of that total bottom line available funding. So it, it's not that it's going to be lost or just thrown in. It would help us address that beginning balance shortfall for FY18. And, and certainly the board can choose to do anything with it, right? But, but that was this recommendation was to help with the beginning balance.
I do appreciate that, and that's the highest macro level. The problem we have is that there's all these other things that we could take this 4. whatever million dollars and we could target it to later start times for middle school kids. Now, it wouldn't go toward the budget shortfall because instead, we're going to reach into existing 2017 budget and pull out out-of-town travel and out, and outside contracts and outside consultants and get, you know, find the cost savings there. I mean, and you can say, well, we'll probably have to do both. But my point is, there are so much that we still don't see because it just depends on what gets put into the budget toolkit, what gets put into the front of the task force to consider. And it wasn't until I've got the community coming forward and telling me, how come you're spending money here, 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 and here? And I'm like, I don't know, never saw it. It was never on the, on the cut menu, ever. Or if it was there, it wasn't delineated. It was, no one's going to cut project momentum, so it's not there. Needs-based staffing, you know, 48 million dollars, 45, 43 million dollars. It used to be 66 million. But we even, even as a board talked about, so when we've cut tens of millions out of there, did we see any drop off in student achievement? So I guess what I'm trying to say is, this is sort of a macro level conversation we're having with a real tiny amount of money. I mean, 4.5 million, the grand scheme of 2.8 billion. But I've watched this board play hot potato with $400,000 at the, at, at a budget vote in May. So I don't think we'll solve it here today, Ms. Kofax. I just thought, if we don't start being more aware of what is in our budget and where we're targeting it, and maybe we all, 12 of us, need to start thinking about being more intentional. being more intentional in where we target funds to help our superintendent, to help our leadership team understand where our priorities are. But this one just feels like tha- that, that goes and helps reduce the bottom line, but there's all this other stuff that we could be doing too and-
I, I, I appreciate your comments and I sense your frustration and I, and I do understand what you're saying. I do think, um, you know, th- there's a couple of different ways to look at it. I, I'm not discounting what either you or Ms. Schultz had said and, and I'm speaking for myself. I'm not speaking as the budget chair, I'm just saying. Um, but, uh, what I, what I think needs to, Ms. Ms. Strauss did say that, and, and we can debate what Ms. Schultz said, you know, should it be an amendment? How should cart, chicken, you know, har- horse before the cart or something, you know, cart before the horse type of situation? Which way do we do it? That may be a, a, a process for governance to take up and saying, because there, if there's frustration on the board. Um, but as the, the staff has said, you know, it is our determination. Um, Ms. Strauss said, you know, you look at it in totality, if we move these funds forward now, there's nothing etched in stone. Debate it now, debate it later. That's another debate. Should, when should we do that and what should we do? And to what level should we, we get? Because I, I hear you, you commenting on that. So, um, you know, that may be something, I think, we, we do have quite a robust, uh, discussion scheduled for the budget on, uh, what, January twenty-third? And, um, that will be a four-hour conversation that is budgeted, that amount of time is budgeted. So, I think some of these things, and if you have concerns like that, you know, maybe filter them to me also offline so I can kind of filter them to the right people and we can, we can talk about that as, as we move forward. Um, but, you know, now we're just trying to get through this mid-year review and, and I, I hear your, your, your suggestions and, um, they're, they're noted. So, um, I now have two other people, Ms. Hines and then Ms. Corbett Sanders.
All I was gonna suggest is that putting this in a parking lot, which is essentially what I think they're recommending here, is that we are putting this in a parking lot to determine how to best utilize these funds once we have a better grasp going forward. And so, this doesn't really, um, address your bigger issues, which is peeling back the onion and having a more detailed look at the, um, budget and understanding how the budget and each individual or how the expenditures relate to our strategic plan and how we are going to address the carryover funds. Um, that's, that's a different issue which we, both you and I offered amendments last spring. And I'm optimistic that based on the amendments that were, uh, unanimously supported by this board, that we will see a budget coming forward that gives us that more granular detail.
All right, and with that, um, we will be voting on this, um, for action on the fifteenth of this month. Um, this portion of the work session is over. Um, we have the, the same staff here, but I still believe we need two minutes for the tape. So, if you want to run somewhere for two minutes, if not, just sit here and hold tight and we'll start the second session.